A quorum being present, the special town meeting will come to order. We still have quite a few people who haven't checked in yet. We may actually need to put some in the auditorium. But I want to thank all of you for coming early or on time. And I'm going to start out of respect for you. We'll omit reading the return of the warrant, which shows that it was properly served. I ask that all who can rise to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. I'll briefly state our customary procedural points. There are several stationary microphones around the gym and in the auditorium. If you want to speak, please go to the mic nearest your seat, wait to be recognized, and then give the meeting their name and address if we don't already have them. I'm Alan Wilson, and the assistant moderator in the auditorium is Jay Bothwick, and the assistant clerk in the auditorium is Ellen Flatley. I ask that you stand when you speak, if you can, and this applies to town officials at the front as well as to those on the floor of the meeting. The tellers also have portable mics for anyone who might have difficulty reaching the stationary ones. If that's the case, please raise your hand, and we'll make sure that a mic comes to you. Speakers must remember to direct their remarks to me or to Mr. Bothwick as moderator and not to other town officials or voters. They must also limit their remarks to two minutes or less unless they've received my permission in advance to speak longer. My intention is to call on every voter who desires to speak on an issue before the meeting. But if the motion for the previous question, that's the motion to cut off debate, is properly introduced and seconded, under the rules we follow, it's not debatable. I'll call directly for a vote without further discussion. I'll accept the motion for the previous question only when a voter rises and is recognized solely for that purpose. I won't accept this motion from one who makes a statement on the merits and then immediately moves to close the door on contrary views. You should have picked up a yellow card as you checked in. This identifies you as a voter. If the electronic voting system should fail, heaven forbid, and we have a counted hand vote, please hold up your card to make sure you're counted. Most matters require a majority vote. The motion for the previous question requires a two-thirds vote, and certain other questions require a two-thirds or, in some cases, a greater proportion, and I'll explain those if they arise. Non-voters are permitted to attend the meeting with the consent of the moderator. We have with us tonight Gregory Fetterspiel, Town Administrator, the heads of all town departments, Michelle Randazzo and Carolyn Murray, with KP Law, Town Council, Emily Ennis, Consultant to the Planning Board and MBA Task Force, and Chris LaPointe, the President of Essex County Green Belt Association. All these people have my permission to be here and to speak if needed. And it's my pleasure to introduce our new town clerk, Christine Dixon. Please join me in welcoming her. Once we've established a quorum, as we now have, I'll assume a quorum continues to be present until it's challenged and found lacking by an actual count. The procedures we follow reflect provisions of the Massachusetts Acts and General Laws, Article II of the Town's General Bylaw, a book called Town Meeting Time and the Traditions of the Town. It's unlawful to smoke on school grounds. I ask that you turn off or mute cell phones and other electronic devices. The meeting is being videotaped by 1623 Studios and is also being recorded. I want to thank the following residents who are serving as volunteers tonight. Assisting the town clerk, Allison Anhold White, Jeffrey Bodmer Turner, Eileen Bonner, Muffin Driscoll, Martha Farmer, Ellen Flatley, Bruce Jurney, Tom Keigho, Carolyn Kelly, Judy Laspesa, Melanie Alderman, Elaine Persons, Bob Ryan, Kathy Ryan, Lee Simmons, Chris Thomas, Pamela Thorn, Greshen Wood assisting me by timing speakers, and Tiffany Marletter running the electronic voting system in the gym, and Debbie Powers on electronic voting in the auditorium. Thank you all for serving the town. I now recognize Ann Harrison, Chair of the Select Board.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. As you are all aware, you are the legislative body of this town. You make the decisions for us on budgets and principles, and your presence here is most welcomed by me and by the rest of the selectmen. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Ann. There were four handouts you should have received as you checked in. One submitted by the Select Board under the town seal, one titled 3A Mythbusters, one headed How Will a Yes Vote on Article 4 Affect Manchester by the Sea, and one titled Vote Yes on Article 4 MBTA Zoning. The Select Board handout is particularly important because it contains the warrant and the motions we'll be voting on this evening, including the text of the proposed zoning amendment under Article 4. So it's especially important that everyone have that one. If you don't have it, please raise your hand, and a teller will bring you one. Good. We'll be voting electronically at this meeting. You should have received a keypad like this when you checked in. We're going to use the keypads for all votes. I'll announce when the voting period for each motion opens and ends, and while we're voting, a box in the upper right-hand corner of the screens will show the 15-second voting period counting down. Press 1 to vote yes, 2 to vote no, or 3 to abstain on the motion under consideration. If you change your mind, just press the other button. The computer records only your last choice. When the voting period ends, the screens will show the number of yes and no votes and abstentions, and also display the totals graphically. It'll be on the screens around the gym and also in the screen in the auditorium. If you need to leave early, please exit through the lobby where you checked in and return the handset so we can keep an accurate tally of how many voters are still here. The handsets are in sleep mode until a button is pressed, so the screen will be blank until you vote. After you vote, the LED in the upper right corner will turn green, indicating that your vote was received, and the screen will display 1A for yes, 2B for no, or 3C for abstain. The device then goes back to sleep. We've checked the handsets thoroughly and tested them all, so it's very unlikely that any will fail to work. But if you don't see the appropriate display after voting or you experience any other problem, you can go back to the check-in station and get another one. We'll conduct two test votes to make sure everyone is comfortable with the system. First question. Will you? I see that we do have some voters in the auditorium, so I should explain that the voting display that you'll see on the screens reflects the aggregate total for the votes in both rooms. Are we ready? Will you have turkey for Thanksgiving? Press 1 for yes, 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. Voting is open. Testing clickers? And voting is closed. It's not quite unanimous, but almost. 604 in favor. 98 against, and 29 opposed, abstaining, rather. Second question. As may be familiar from last year, will the Celtics repeat as NBA champions? 1 for yes, 2 for no, and 3 to abstain. 432 yes, 144 no, 100 abstain. Not quite as big a majority as turkey's. Are there any questions about how to vote electronically? The voting system will produce an anonymous log of how each handset was used on each vote. Any voter who wishes will be able to go to the town clerk's office and determine how his or her votes were recorded, but the town will not create a record linking voters' names with individual handsets, so all votes are secret. That means that if you want to check your voting record with the town clerk, you'll need to save the device's identifier. It's the six-character alphanumeric code on the back of the handset, following the words "device ID" next to the QR code. If you have a clicker with a white lanyard, then the device ID is underneath the barcode. Fire chief has reminded me to tell everybody that if we need to exit in an emergency, the people in the front half of the room should go through this door, and the people in the back half of the room should go through that door. And please do it quickly but carefully. I want to remind everyone of Manchester's tradition of civil and respectful debate at town meeting. People have strong feelings about the proposed zoning amendment we'll take up tonight, but disagreement doesn't require being disagreeable. Personal attacks have no place here, and I will not allow them. Let's engage as neighbors, remembering that we all want the best for Manchester. Before we turn to the warrant, I have a personal announcement. I will not stand for reelection in May. I am saying this now so that potential candidates have plenty of time to decide on their plans. I encourage them to make their intentions known early to give the voters an opportunity to assess their candidacies. At the end of my current term, I will have been moderator for 30 years, and I'll be Thank you. Thank you very much. I don't cry easily, but you may bring tears to my eyes. 30 years, and I'll be 78 years old. Some might say I'm finally old enough to run for president.[788.13][788.13](Laughter). I don't think so. I love this job. I love the challenges, and most of all, I value the opportunity to work with fellow citizens and town employees I wouldn't have known any other way. But as John Glenn said when he announced his retirement from the U.S. Senate, also after 30 years, quote, "There is still no cure for the common birthday." I think it's better to retire early than too late. You have my heartfelt gratitude for your confidence and support over these 30 years. Later, it was something other than water.[844.82][844.82](Laughter). We'll now go to Article 1. Article 1 concerns the acquisition of a conservation restriction on land, and Steve Gang, Chair of the Conservation Commission, moves the article as printed in the warrant, and John Round, Vice Chair of the Select Board, seconds. Article 4, Section 8 of the Town's General Bylaw, provides that no acquisition of an interest in real property shall be authorized by town meeting unless it's been referred to the Planning Board and the Planning Board has submitted a report to the town. I have a report from the Planning Board dated November 12, 2024, stating that it, at its November 12, 2024 public meeting, the Board voted to recommend the purchase of this conservation restriction using CPA funds. And this is a two-thirds vote pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 14.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and Select Board, and elected officials, volunteers, and fellow citizens. It's great to see you all here, and I hope this is the easy part of the evening. There's three simple reasons to support this article: to devote a quarter million dollars toward the purchase price of a conservation to protect this land. The first is that purely in conservation terms, this is a spectacular step. This is the remaining land that knits together what's left from a very prodigious effort in the '90s by people like Steve Hall and Olga Hayes and many others to protect part of the De-Normandy land. This is the remainder of the De-Normandy land. When it's done, it will link Dexter Pond all the way to Dogtown and beyond, actually. So it's a big deal in conservation terms, and anybody who's hiked or walked or biked up there knows what I'm talking about. The second reason is that there's a crown jewel in this property. It's 330 acres, but about 30-plus acres of it in Manchester is prime development land, and it's been held out of conservation restriction, I think, with that purpose. The conservation value of it, above and beyond the land value, is over a million dollars. So our quarter million dollars is kind of a bargain for protecting that piece, which has frontage on Colburn Road, and, as I said, it's beautiful hillside and very developable. Third is that these funds for this purchase are already collected and in the accounts of CPC, so there's no additional taxation. There'll be no user fees. This is the closest thing to a free lunch we're going to see in these tight-budget times. So those are the three reasons, I think, why the Select Board, the FinCom, the Planning Board, the ConCom, the Open Space and Rec Committee, and the CPC have all thoroughly endorsed this, and I hope you will too.
I'm going to depart for a minute. Bob, the people in the auditorium aren't seeing a display in the gym. Spent a lot of time getting this organized, so I hope we can get it to work.
I believe they are, Alan, but they're confused. They're seeing the articles, and they're expecting a camera image of the people in this room, and that's not what we're sending them. We're sending them the articles on the screen. I've got a confirmation that this is what they're seeing, and I think that people are somehow expecting to see something different, but I'll double-check it.
Can we display the people speaking in the gym?
No, we cannot. It's a one-way. We can display the people speaking from the auditorium to join us here, but we can't display what's here up into the gym.
I see. Okay.
Sorry.
Is there discussion?
Okay, I'm Dick Gutal, 17 Desmond Avenue. I'll be voting no on this on principle. My principle is stop selling off Manchester land or giving Manchester land to conservation. The reason I feel this way is that the town is constantly squished for the need of other things that include the long list of things that we saw from the town manager, but most importantly, more senior housing, more affordable housing, and so forth. If there's any land that's available at all, it should be used for these other important things. If we give it all away to the squirrels, we'll have nothing left for us. That's my word.
Thank you, sir. Further discussion? I don't see any hands. Is the meeting ready to vote? As I said, this is a two-thirds vote. Yep. If you're in favor, press yes, 2 for no, and 3 for abstain, and voting is open. No, 75, and 17 abstentions. Motion carries by more than two-thirds. Article 2 is a proposal to amend the General Bylaw related to stormwater management, and Brian Solace moves the article as printed in the warrant, and Jeff Delaney seconds.
Good evening. The town's municipal separate storm sewer system permit, known as MS-4, is what allows the town to own and operate a stormwater collection system and discharge the waters of the United States of America. All town-owned drainage, whether in the street, easement, or private property that goes into the town-owned drainage and outfalls, is subject to the permit requirements within our MS-4 permit. One such requirement is that the town have a stormwater bylaw that meets its minimum thresholds as defined by the Environmental Protection Agency and Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Prior to the special town meeting in fall of 2022, the stormwater regulations existed in the zoning bylaws. At the fall 2022 special town meeting that included several other bylaw changes, voters approved moving the stormwater bylaw to its current location as Article 23 in the general bylaws. The bylaw update at that time was based on the Mass. DEP standards and boilerplate language while also putting the review under the Department of Public Works, who handle all other aspects of the MS-4 compliance. However, the Planning Board retains review when a special permit is needed. In January of 2024, the town was notified that the Mass. DEP language used in the bylaw was not sufficient and that it would need to be updated. On May of 2024, the town was issued the administrative order from EPA for having a violation of the Clean Water Act and the requirements of our MS-4 permit. The action here: the revised bylaw before you tonight aims to pull specific performance and process language out of the bylaw itself and refer to DPW rules and regulations. These rules and regulations would cover the more specific performance criteria and be approved by the Select Board after holding a public hearing. This will enable the town to make the necessary changes and to maintain compliance with any revised language issued by the EPA and/or the Mass. DEP in the future, outside of town meeting while keeping the core stormwater management in the general bylaw as required. The Select Board is in favor of this change and will hold public hearings in the near future to take comments and approve the proposed DPW rules and regulations. Please vote in favor of the updated stormwater bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Solace. Is there discussion?
There's just something I'm not clear about here.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Thomas Frank, 195 Summer Street.
Thank you.
The materials provided on the town website weren't particularly informative, other than to state the new wording. Didn't mention anything about not being in compliance with the EP or anyone else. I'm surprised to see that in the existing bylaws that town committees are responsible for issuing these permits with commentary by Department of Health, Public Works, and the Conservation Committee. Now it goes solely to Public Works. Is this assertion that the DEP says that the Department of Public Works has the say in this? Is it the ultimate say? Is that the legal interpretation?
I'll recognize Chuck Dam, who is the Director of Department of Public Works.
Here right now.
Yes.
All right. Thank you for the question. So we are not taking all of the issues of compliance away from the boards and committees. Actually, in the revised bylaw, and I believe the existing bylaw, it still refers to Planning Board for a special permit, and any requirements that Planning Board has about stormwater would still be handled at the special permit level with Planning Board. Also, it does not take away any Conservation Commission notice of intent or any being in violation or compliance with that bylaw, the conservation bylaw. This is actually only to catch what doesn't fall under those bylaws so that somebody at the town, in this case DPW, can revise or review and comment. And if it so happens that they meet a threshold that would put them with Planning Board or ConCom, we will direct them that way. This is solely to catch any that would have otherwise slipped through the cracks.
Thank you, Mr. Dam. Further question?
That's it? Sorry. My reading is that the Department of Public Works is responsible for approval or denial of permits. It's pretty clear in the text.
For stormwater bylaws that are outside the purview of the other ones. So it'll be clear, but in the existing regulation, it also talks about Planning Board and ConCom, and in the revised rules and regulations that we're asking the Select Board to review, it will say the same thing. So it's just the purpose here tonight is not to take away any of the existing controls that are already in place. It's just to catch the ones that would have otherwise slipped through the cracks. And that, you know, that is what DEP and EPA are asking us to do, to meet compliance.
But doesn't the material say?
Do you have something further to say?
Doesn't the material say that the text provided will completely replace Article 23?
That's correct.
So then what you're referring to is no longer applicable. And I'm just concerned that there are a number of limits that are referred to in the text, which I can't find any material on the town website as to what those limits are. Which is promulgated here under, and they're not defined.
This is Greg Fetterspiel, the Town Administrator.
So the current bylaw that is in existence has those limits, and the proposal takes those same standards, tweaks them a bit to comply with...
Hold, turn it up.
Well, I understand you saying that you need to be in compliance. The town needs to be in compliance with regulations. I think it would be helpful to us to know what those regulations are before we vote on it.
Correct. Those regulations are within the existing bylaw with some minor fine-tuning based on some new standards that EPA and DEP have promulgated. And those will be available during the public hearing that the Select Board will hold when they make final approval of the bylaw, of the rules and regulations that the DPW is promulgating.
Thank you, Mr. Fetterspiel. Further discussion? Meeting ready to vote? This is a majority vote to amend the general bylaw. Yes for no, I mean, yes for, yeah, 1 for yes, 2 for no, and 3 to abstain, and voting And the vote is 698 in favor, 76 opposed, and 51 abstaining. And that's a majority vote. Article 3... Article 3 concerns payment of bills from a previous fiscal year. And Sarah Mellish moves to transfer $14,581 from free cash to pay expenses incurred in the previous fiscal year for consulting services related to the Zoning Board of Appeals' denial of the proposed 40B project off Upper School Street. And Catherine Bellotta seconds the motion. And I'll just note that the amount has increased from the amount shown in the warrant, which was $9,886. The new amount in the motion is $14,581. And in my judgment, the larger amount is within the scope of the warrant, so I will allow it. Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 64, requires a nine-tenths vote at a special town meeting to pay unpaid bills from a prior fiscal year. So this motion will require nine tenths for approval. Can we have power to that mic, Bob?
I can go to, oh, there you go. These invoices were emailed to the town during the last fiscal year by the consultants hired by the town to, as expert testimony in the Sylvia appeal at the HAC. They were not sent to the town accountant, so the fiscal year 24 books were closed, and the unspent money was sent to free cash. So now we're asking you to approve, to spend this money and take it out of free cash. Flow through, God help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mellish. Is there discussion? Ready to vote? If you're in favor, press 1. Opposed, press 2. And three to abstain. And the vote is 793 in favor, 29 against, with 18 abstentions. That's 96.4%. So that's approved by more than nine tenths. And we're now at Article 4. I think everybody knows what this is. Sue Philbrook of the Planning Board moves that the town adopt the article as presented in the warrant and amend the town's zoning bylaw as stated in the handout at town meeting. And Ann Harrison seconds the motion. Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 5, provides that no amendment to a zoning bylaw shall be adopted until after the Planning Board has conducted a public hearing on the proposed amendment. Planning Board held a public hearing on the proposed amendment on October 28, 2024. The statute further provides that no vote shall be taken by town meeting on a proposed amendment until a report with recommendations by the Planning Board has been submitted to the town. The Planning Board has submitted its report in a memo to me dated November 10, 2024, and recommends approval. The statute also provides that zoning amendments to allow multifamily housing development as of right in an eligible location require a simple majority vote, unlike most zoning amendments, which require two-thirds. This proposed amendment meets that standard, and therefore it requires only a majority. I'll recognize Sue Philbrook, and I've told her that she can have longer than two minutes.
Is it? Is it on? Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you all for coming tonight. And those of you who have been engaged in the process for a while, your engagement has resulted in this terrific compliance package that is contained in this zoning amendment. Those of you who are just tuning in tonight, no judgment. That's the way I was before I joined the Planning Board. So I will give you a five-minute crash course in the MBTA Communities Act and Manchester's Compliance Plan, which is set forth in this 16-plus-page document. First of all, the law, and it is a law. It's Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3A. And Manchester wants to comply with the law because we don't want to be sued by the Attorney General, and we don't want to give up millions of dollars in funding that we need to run our town in a responsible way. So what does the law require of Manchester? It requires that we zone. It's a zoning law, not a building law. Nothing has to be built anywhere, anytime, ever. So it requires that we zone 37 acres out of our 5,888 acres for multifamily zoning, multifamily, sorry, multifamily housing suitable for children. Multifamily housing is defined as on one lot, one building, three units or more; on one lot, two buildings, two units each. Obviously, we have hundreds of units of multifamily zoning already in Manchester, so it is part of the fabric of our community. What else do we have to do? So we can't put the 37-acre zone just anywhere. 14.8 acres needs to be within a half-mile of our train station, and that's hard because part of that is water, and the other part is our downtown, and we need to preserve our vibrant downtown such as it is. 18.5 acres has to be contiguous or touching. And we can't just pick an acre here and an acre there all over town because another rule requires that the minimum size of a zone be five acres. And the hardest part for us in our math problem here was a minimum density throughout the 37 acres of 15 units per acre. That means apartments, condos, single-family houses, 15 residential units an acre. So our plan, what you'll be voting on tonight, includes four overlay districts. It's like putting a blanket over a section of town. Everything under that blanket will be part of this overlay district, and it will be a new property right for those under that overlay district. And if you saw the films, you know that there are four separate overlay districts. And how did we pick those? Well, one, they comply with the law. And we wanted to comply with the law in a way that preserved the character of our town and preserved the character of each of our neighborhoods. We also wanted minimal effect on our town. We wanted to minimize the change. And so that means zoning over areas that are already developed, already containing multifamily housing and containing small lots. We wanted to avoid our downtown, to preserve our business district, and we wanted to avoid our historic district. The other part of the package that you're voting on tonight, in addition to the four districts, and you can see the maps at the end of the warrant article. Briefly, Pine Street, starting, Lower Pine, starting at Newport Park, going down the street, including the gas station and some properties on the other side of the street, around the bottom of the corner, not including a few of the single-family homes, going up Elm, including Sommeil Circle, going up to Powder House, including some of the businesses along there. Each of these, each of, each part of this district includes multifamily housing already. The next district begins over across town. It starts at the Variety Gas Station, used to be Richdale's, goes around that corner, up Summer Street, goes around the corner onto C Street, and then around the corner and wraps around the former Valentine Moving Warehouse. That section of town also contains multifamily housing already. It's quite dense, small lots. There's a subsection of that area, just like the red area that you'll see in the Pine Street map, that has a unit cap. Pine Street, it's a five-unit cap. In the C Street sub-district, it's a four-unit cap. Another district across town, Beaver Dam near the Mac. We picked that one because we wanted to ease some of the density around town. But also, it's a very successful storage business, unlikely to be developed. And finally, the other district near town begins at 66 Summer, goes up the street to the gas station, round the corner for a bit. Again, that section between Allen and the gas station includes multifamily housing and small lots. So our point was to reduce the ability for further development. The other part of our compliance package are design guidelines. We don't have these in Manchester now, but if you want to build a project under this new zoning bylaw, you have to comply with these design guidelines. And their intention is so that any project will conform to the character of our community. They deal with appearance and other factors that make sure that the project is not too big, that the materials used conform to the neighborhood, and it will be reviewed by the Planning Board in a site review process. Finally, our package includes affordability. 20% of units that are potentially developed under this zoning bylaw are required to be affordable for each project, 20% of each project. That's what our plan includes, in a nutshell. It would be great if we could pass this and get MBTA zoning in our rearview mirror so that our town can move on to our other business and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Philbrook. And I'll recognize Chris Olney for remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, everyone. I asked if I could say a few words of appreciation before we continue. First, I want to say that we all miss Ron Mastro Giacomo. He was the Chair of the Planning Board, who died this past spring. I'm sorry he's not here to cast his vote with us. I also want to express my appreciation for the members of the MBTA Zoning Task Force, who worked with such dedication and creativity to produce this proposal for your consideration. They include Ann Harrison from the Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry, the Select Board, excuse me. Sarah Mellish, who is the Chair of the ZBA, the FinCom, and a member of the Affordable Housing Trust. Gar Morris from the Downtown Improvement Program. Michael Pratt from the FinCom. Richard Smith from the Historic District Commission. Sue Philbrook from the Planning Board. And two at-large members, Denny Hall and Sandy Bodmer Turner. When we came together 18 months ago, the only thing we could agree on was that this was a complicated and thankless task. But working together, we came up with this zoning plan that both complies with the state law and minimizes impacts on the town. There are also some town staff that deserve recognition for their efforts. Of course, Greg Fetterspiel, our Town Administrator. Gail Hunter, who provided the administrative support for the task force. Mark Resnick, our new town planner. His first day on the job was meeting with the task force, and he quickly had to learn how complicated both the law was and how complicated the town is. But fortunately for us, he learned quickly and well. And then there's Tiffany Marletta. She single-handedly put together, created the critical outreach plan, and implemented it as well. And she produced the videos, all the design work, everything else. We wouldn't be here without Tiffany. And finally, very quickly, I want to express my appreciation for town residents, both those who provided strong support and encouragement for our efforts and those who stood in opposition. Many offered both advice and criticism. They pointed out weaknesses, asked good questions, and their comments led us to a better plan. So I thank them for their patience and their willingness to speak up. And finally, in closing, when people ask me if I'll be glad when this is over, I tell them it'll be like getting a rock out of my shoe. And I hope to start unlacing my shoes shortly.
Thank you, Mr. Olney. I just want to tell you that we've got 886 people checked in so far, which is a record during my 30 years. And I think we're going to go over 900, so that's darn good. And I'll now recognize Sarah Mellish for remarks on behalf of the Finance Committee. And I've told her that she can have a little more than three minutes.
Thank you. In the packet you received, we entered at the very back is a summary of the fiscal analysis. What is the fiscal impact based on whether you vote yes or no? Voting yes has almost no financial impact. Additional tax revenue should cover any additional cost of town services. How can that be? We assume new units will be built over 20 years. The three units by right in an existing structure in the general district allowed for 75 years is not fully built out. We included both 134 and 352 new units. The 134 units include 34 in the downtown districts and 100 at Beaver Dam Road. Based on a report from RKG, a well-respected consulting firm with expertise in this matter, which determined property acquisition costs, construction costs, and post-construction market value, make it likely only 134 new units will be created. The task force selected areas with small lots, the small projects, which are generally not economically feasible. Some may dispute this number, so we also included 352 units, the maximum under the zoning reflected in the state compliance model. Using the current ratio of school district students to dwelling units will result in two to five new students per year. These students can be accommodated without additional infrastructure or personnel. Some people may dispute these numbers. We do not believe different calculations will change our results. Why? There are 172 fewer Manchester students in the school district today than in 2020, and there are 80 school choice students from other towns filling empty seats. What if you vote no? We project a 7% to 14% increase in the tax rate due to 250,000 illegal fees for state litigation and 2 to 4 million less revenue per year for the loss of state grants. Some people argue grants are not guaranteed. That's true, but this is a financial analysis, and to ignore potential state grants would be wrong. Our 25-year capital plan includes 250 million for infrastructure, water and sewer, and climate resiliency. This is a daunting amount, and it is incumbent on the town to apply for all potential grants, such as for the rotunda, PFAs, sewer plant, dredging, and the library. The governor has advised state agencies to consider noncompliance in approving grant applications, going far beyond the short list of grants that can be denied under the law. We feel our assumption of lost grants is conservative and expect to obtain larger amounts. amounts. In summary, we feel voting yes will not cost you additional money, and voting no could result in a tax increase of between seven and fourteen percent or more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mellish. Now, Ms. Mellish is going to move to amend the main motion, and I'm going to state that for her. But before I do that, I'd like everybody to refer to the Select Board's packet and go to the text of the zoning amendment so you can see what I'm talking about. We're going to be looking at lines 101 to 103. That's on page eleven. Thank you.
It's ninety-nine to 101.
Well, I guess they changed the line numbering on me. It's actually lines ninety-nine to 101. That's different from the copy I have, and I can't explain why. Everybody there now? Now that we've got the right numbers? Okay. Sarah Mellish moves to amend the main motion by adding in line --
Ninety-nine.
In line 101, after the word "district," the following. Quote, "And no division of a parcel shall increase the maximum number of dwelling units allowed per lot in existence on November eighteen, 2024," unquote. So that's section nine point four point five point four. At lines ninety-nine through 101 will then read in its entirety, "For Lot Division. The division of a parcel of land in any CHOD district shall meet the minimum lot size and frontage requirements of the underlying base zoning district." And, and this is the new part, "And no division of a parcel shall increase the maximum number of dwelling units allowed per lot in existence on November eighteen, 2024." And Sue Filbrick seconds the motion. Remarks, Ms. Mellish.
Thank you. The purpose of this amendment is to protect against the division of properties increasing the total number of allowed units. The number of units in the state compliance model are based on the lesser of an existing property's square footage divided by two thousand, rounded down, or a maximum number of units per existing property, meant to avoid large projects. A property owner may divide their property, but the maximum allowable units will be the same as prior to the division, so people can't circumvent the per-property maximum. I thank the residents who raised this concern so that we can avoid unintended consequences. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to limit discussion for now to only Ms. Mellish's amendment. In other words, we're not going to take up anything else. When that discussion is finished, we'll vote on the amendment, and then I'll open discussion of the main motion, whether it's amended or not. If we were to combine the discussion of the amendment with everything else in that proposed zoning amendment, it would be hopelessly confusing. And by the time we got later to vote on the amendment, we probably would have forgotten the reasons for it. Is there discussion on the amendment, on Ms. Mellish's amendment? Ms. Foley.
Hi, Mary Foley, One Pulaski Drive. So could you explain if you have a lot, just pick a number, say it's thirty thousand square feet, and it's in District D, and you divide it into two, and they sell one of the lots, and then the other lot, they build the five units on it? What if that new owner wants to build five lots as well? Is the town going to say no?
Ms. Mellish.
Yes, it won't be allowed. That the maximum units for any parcel are based on the parcel that exists today, so that you can't divide it, sell it off, and add five more units. But this is a new parcel, so you can build a house on it under the underlying zoning, outside of the multifamily housing zoning.
I do think there might be some legal issues with that, of controlling what people can do with their lots, but I will leave that to Town Council.
I'll ask Town Councils to respond to that if you can. And this is Carolyn Murray with KP Law, Town Council.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We've looked at this amendment this afternoon, and quite frankly, in our opinion, it's consistent with the MBTA zoning, meaning otherwise it's not going to render us not in compliance if this amendment is adopted. It is entirely possible, however, that the Attorney General might look at this as infringing upon people's rights under the subdivision control law and might have a different view of this. But if that's the case, the Attorney General has the ability to simply strike any language from the bylaw that they deem to be inconsistent with state law.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. Mr. Fetterspiel.
I would like to point out --
The mic is not working.
I would like to point out -- Are you hearing? Yes, you can hear me now. Okay. So I would like to point out that currently our bylaws refer to analogous date impressions in the bylaw. So one is under our ADU bylaw, that if you have an existing lot that was put in in nineteen eighty, or prior, I think it's prior, then you can go ahead and proceed. So this is very similar to that, and the AG has not ruled that inconsistent. We also have -- I just spaced out on the second one. There's another part of the bylaw. Oh, the ADUs. No, that's I just said.
Zone D2.
Right, I'm sorry. Yes, in D2, currently in Zone D2, there's a date restriction as well that allows properties that were built before a certain date to be converted to two-unit dwellings. So it is analogous to those two situations that we already have in the bylaw. So that gives us greater confidence, since the Attorney General has already approved these analogous provisions, that this current provision as proposed will pass muster.
Thank you, Mr. Fetterspiel. Further discussion on Ms. Mellish's amendment? Yes, ma'am.
So then, could someone comment?
Could you give us your name and address?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Christine Delisio, Sixth Lincoln Avenue. So could someone please comment on this obviously then wasn't submitted to the state, and so Town Council's advice is this state will approve this as appropriate?
That's what Ms. Murray said.
But I just want to confirm that we haven't submitted to the state, right? We all under -- clear?
That's correct.
Under pre-adoption. Thank you.
Further discussion? I don't see any other hands. Is the meeting ready to vote? As I said, this is a majority vote on the amendment. Press one for yes, two for no, and three to abstain. The vote is seven hundred and fifty-seven in favor, ninety-eight opposed, and twenty-four abstaining. So we've amended the main motion to include Ms. Mellish's amendment, and now I'll open discussion on the main motion as we just amended it. And I'm going to try to alternate between the gym and the auditorium with speakers so that we hear from everybody who wants to speak. And I'll recognize Christine Delisio.
Thank you. Good evening, Manchester. What a warm welcome. All right, my name is Christine Delisio, and I'm a proud resident and a former member of the Planning Board. First, I'd like to take a moment --
Could you give us your address, please?
What's that?
Could you give us your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sixth Lincoln Avenue.
Thank you.
I'd first like to take a moment to recognize the work of the task force and Planning Board in addressing this important issue. Tonight, I would like to emphasize I am urging you all to vote no. A no vote isn't vote to postpone. While my position on tonight's matter has not been surprising, or is, may not be surprising, I want to frame this discussion from a broader perspective. This evening, I ask us as a community to pause, step back, and reflect on why a more deliberate approach is right, is the right path forward. Allow me to present three key reasons. One, first, the SJC, the highest court in Massachusetts, has not yet ruled on the Milton case. This pending decision is critical and will have significant implications for towns like ours, offering much-needed legal clarity. Why rush to a conclusion without this essential guidance? We owe it to ourselves and to our community to wait for an informed decision. Two, similar communities are also waiting. Our neighbors, Hamilton and Wenham, along with other communities with comparable histories, values, and zoning challenges, have chosen to pause and wait for this Milton decision. Their thoughtful and cautious approach sets an example we should follow. These proposed zoning bylaws have unresolved issues, as we have just heard about. There is already an amendment to these proposed bylaws. The amendment presented tonight is a clear example of why this zoning bylaw is premature to be presented to the Manchester residents. Moving forward without resolving all of our issues could lead to long-term mistakes. Let's not be -- let's not let the urgency to act override the importance of thoughtful, deliberate decision-making. Acting in haste now could lead to regrettable outcomes later. Due to the Manchester-unique general bylaw language, we simply cannot make a motion tonight to postpone this matter until the spring town meeting. However, by voting no tonight, we effectively accomplish just that, delaying this matter until spring and giving ourselves time to thoroughly address outstanding concerns. There's nothing so urgent about this decision that it cannot wait a few more months. Let us take this time to carefully consider our options, resolve any lingering issues, and ensure our choices reflect the best interests of our community. Let's prioritize deliberation over haste. Let us vote to pause and revisit this matter in the spring. Therefore, in closing, I ask you all to vote no on Article Four. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delisio. And I'll ask if there's anyone asking to speak in the auditorium. Mr. Bothwick and I are texting back and forth, so I hope he'll tell me if there's anybody Well, I'm not getting an answer, so I guess not. He says no, there is not somebody waiting in the auditorium. So further discussion in the -- yes. Lady in the back.
Is this on? Yeah. Hi, my name is Susan Wadia Els, Zero Elm Street. I'm in one of the targeted neighborhoods. None of the seven people on the special subcommittee are in any of the targeted neighborhoods. Milton, the town of Milton, had a vote, and the townspeople said, "No, we don't want this mandate. There are, at this point, four pots of state money that will be denied us if we agree to this housing mandate, which will forever change the patina of our town." And I would like to say, this amendment, if we pass it tonight, will forever change the patina of Manchester by the sea. It will no longer be a special place. The four pots of money that we will now be denied if we vote yes tonight are -- we have received, in the last few years, we have received only three grants under these four pots of money. One grant was a hundred thousand dollar feasibility study, should we move the wastewater plant and put housing there? The study's feasibility statement said no. The second grant we've received under these pots that we would now be denied if we vote yes, if we vote no tonight. The second one was a matching grant of dredging the harbor. Five hundred thousand, we had to pay; five hundred thousand, the state paid. If we would only be like Essex and go back and be a federal-protected port, the Corps of Army Engineers will pay all of our future dredging. So those are two grants we really didn't need to apply for and didn't need. The third is a three-point-five-million-dollar grant, very recent, that cell signaling said to bring the sewer and the water, to not only cell signaling, but it will now bring the sewer and the water to the proposed Shingle Hill development. That's two hundred and seventy-five apartments plus a hundred up by Manchester Athletic Club if we vote yes tonight.
Ms. Wadia Els?
Cell signaling agreed to pay for that three-point-five-million --
Ms. Wadia Els? You're over two minutes.
But our town administrator said, "No, let me volunteer for a state grant," and got it. So we are now subsidizing with our state taxes, we are now subsidizing signal cell technology, whatever it is, CST, you know. We do not need these four pots of money. Milton has said, "Don't change the patina."
Ms. Wadia Els?
Thank you.
You're over two minutes. Please sit down. Further discussion? Is there anyone in the auditorium waiting at this point? Mr. Bothwick, would you recognize the person in the auditorium?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
My name's Wendy Brady. I'm at Ten Lincoln Avenue in Manchester.
Thank you.
Here I am. We can't see you, but, okay. It's just a quick, maybe a two-part question, but I'm wondering if the Finance Committee, the Select Board, and the Planning Board could maybe comment on why they -- we are voting tonight and not waiting for the Milton -- Yeah, the decision with Milton. And I'm just looking for a little insight on that, from them, and their choice in having us here this evening, why we're doing it now.
Alan, did you hear that in the gym?
Yes, we could. Yes, I'm going to ask Town Council to respond to that. Again, this is Carolyn Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The primary reason that this is before you tonight is there is a compliance deadline of December thirty-first of this year. If we do not adopt zoning by that deadline, we will be considered out of compliance with MBTA zoning, excuse me, and the grants that you heard a prior speaker mentioning will be at risk. There are also additional grants that, even though the statute only lists four pockets of money, there are additional grants that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities have mentioned in their guidelines that are also at risk. There are certain discretionary grants that the town may apply for that often the fine print of those grants has language stating that the town has to represent that it is in compliance with state law. If we are not, if we do not adopt -- If we are not, if we do not adopt MBTA zoning, we will not be in compliance with state law. And there is the risk that other discretionary grants may also be denied to the town. Then there is the other elephant in the room, which is that the Attorney General, as we all know, has already sued Milton. The Attorney General could very well start suing some of the other communities for non-compliance as well.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. Mr. Fettishbeal.
So if I could, I'm jinxed here. So I just wanted to add a little more dimension to the issue of the Milton case. So the Milton case does not challenge the legality of the law. It's really a technical challenge to the law. The law will not be removed based on the Milton case. So the Milton is considered a rapid transit town, at least in the state's eyes, and Milton says, "No, we're not. We're similar to us in terms of where we have a commuter rail, but we're not a rapid transit. So our deadline should be this coming December 1st rather than last December 31st." So, yes, you could wait until the Milton case is decided by the SJC, but the SJC is not going to vacate the law. So we would, we'd be noncompliance regardless of that case. So I think there's a strong rationale to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Fettishbeal. And I'll just ask Town Council to confirm that what Mr. Fettishbeal said is correct. You don't have to get up, you can just nod. Yes, they're both nodding. When I, when I used to practice appellate law in the First Circuit Court of Appeals, there were three judges, and I remember learning from a much more experienced appellate lawyer that when all the judges are nodding together, stop talking. Yes, sir. No?
No.
There, we got it now.
Robert Coyne, 115 Beach Street, 40-year resident. I have to concur with what was previously said about voting no for this at this period of time, which would be a vote to pause until this court case has been resolved. There are 17 towns here that have voted no. I'm just going to take a second. East Bridgewater, Foxborough, Freetown, Hanson, Hopton, Marblehead, Marshfield, Middleborough, Middleton, Millbury, Milton, North Reading, Norwell, Riley, Seacock, Tewksbury, and Wilmington. These have all voted no. 10 of them, new towns, have voted to postpone the vote until this case has been resolved. Ashland, Bill Ricker, Georgetown, Hamilton, Hanover Holden, Ipswich, Norwood, Shrewsbury, and Wenham. And I think it behooves us that our own law firm, KP Law, has filed an amicus brief with Hamilton in support of the Milton court case as well. So there is a lot of involved in this as far as past history and so forth. And I'll quote just two sentences from parts of the excerpts. "Zoning power is one of the town's independent municipal powers included in the Home Rule Amendment. Also, local zoning power is one of the independent municipal powers granted to towns by the Home Rule Amendment to control land usage in an orderly, efficient, and safe manner to promote public welfare." And I close in stating that I attended two of the three meetings that the subcommittee hosted, and I have to say, very professional, well-done, and I was somewhat uncomfortable because I was one of a handful of people at two of them. And they put a lot of hundreds of hours into that presentation. My problem is our threat of losing our home rule, our local zoning, and getting a state involved in what we believe we manage very properly here in this town of Manchester. As somebody mentioned, it'll change its tenure if we depend on the state, who has already changed the law four times after it has been enacted. So we're dealing with the state here, and the MBTA is probably the most irresponsible authority in the state, which just in the paper, 600 million in debt and gone up to 900 quite shortly. So I just encourage you, it's not going to waste any of all this work that has been done. We're just pausing it, postponing it until the courts have made a decision on who has the right jurisdiction here.
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. I'm going to see if there's anybody waiting to talk in the auditorium. I'll come back to you, don't worry.
Any comments, any questions? Yes, we have one.
Okay. Hi, this is Sheila Doherty, 7 Lincoln Ave. I'd be interested in understanding more about the tax increase implications. Where are those costs coming from? It sounds like a significant number compared to the grants that we've received.
Ms. Melish.
A $300,000 increase in expenses or loss of revenue translates into a 1% increase in the tax revenue. So if you add the $250,000 for legal expenses, the $2 million, up to $4 million in loss of grants, that comes up with an increase in tax rate of between 7 and 14%. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melish. Further discussion in the gym? Let's go to Mr. Feuerbach.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is John Feuerbach. I'm a 30-year resident at Harold Street, 5 Harold Street. My wife, Mary Jo, and I will vote yes on Article IV. But I'm also here speaking for the Seven Member Affordable Housing Trust. The AHT recently voted to support Article IV, and I just want to focus on two reasons why the AHT supports Article IV. For one, the shortage of housing options in town is clear. A yes vote would support a greater variety of housing in defined areas in town. That could benefit town workers, grown children, young families looking to place roots, and seniors looking to downsize. Secondly, a yes vote would ensure that critical state grants continue to come to town. That's vital for community affordable housing. Discretionary state grants make up the difference between high development costs and the affordable sales prices or rents that can be charged. State housing grants, plus additional local support, like Affordable Housing Trust funding, are required financing sources that make affordable housing development feasible. North Shore agencies that could work in Manchester, such as Harbor Lights, North Shore CDC, rely on state grants to develop affordable rental and homeownership housing. Manchester can't face the possibility of losing state housing grants for new affordable housing and expect to get closer to reaching the critical 10% affordable housing threshold in town needed to avoid hostile 40B developments. For these reasons, the AHT urges everyone to vote yes on Article IV.
Thank you, Mr. Feuerbach. Mr. Bothwick, do we have anybody in the auditorium?
Anyone in the auditorium? Anyone else want to speak? No? Okay. No more questions in the auditorium for the moment.
Thank you. Ms. Bates?
Isabella Bates, 2 Masconomo Street. We live in a commonwealth. It's called a commonwealth because we're supposed to look after each other. For 20 years, the state has been asking towns to develop more housing. They figure that the state of Massachusetts needs 200,000 new housing units in order to continue to grow as a state. We are losing businesses who cannot house the people who want to work for them. So we also have to look at the big picture, as well as our own specific town. The idea of delaying sounds sort of reasonable and relaxed, but on the 31st of December, we will be breaking the law. It will be against the law. And so it's not a simple act to just delay till spring. I feel that the town has entrusted many people to do a very difficult task, and we heard from Sue Philbrick, the detailed way in which they looked at this so that the development would be small and happen at a very slow pace. I think that it's quite reasonable for us to proceed tonight to vote yes on these new changes that really aren't very big. I really strenuously object to the idea that the people on the plan, Planning Board, and the Ad-Hoc Committee kept redistricting from where they live. I do not think that entered into the picture one iota. Yes, there will be people who have it more affected than others. The other thing that I just want to comment on is, change evokes fear. And when we are afraid, we don't think very well. So I really hope we'll all take a very slow, deep breath and recognize, you know, I feel fear too. It's quite reasonable as a human being, but we don't make good decisions out of fear. We have had very careful planning on this, and I really hope that the community will support the work that's been done and go forward and vote yes.
Do we have anyone in the auditorium who wants to speak?
Anyone else would like to speak? I don't see a single hand here.
I'm asking for the auditorium right now.
Nope, no one, no one here wants to speak at the moment.
I'll recognize Gretchen Wood. I don't know if you could hear her, but she said she's going to time herself. And don't go a second over two minutes.
Don't worry. Start, okay. Gretchen Wood, 19 Brook Street. I'm here on behalf of the Manchester Housing Authority, of which I am a board member. And as you may know, we've been working with the Affordable Housing Trust to develop plans to build additional senior housing, as well as rehab the existing units. The state recently appropriated a large sum of money for grants to municipalities for projects, just like ours. A no vote will take away any chance we have of securing a grant to proceed with this much-needed wood work while that money is still available. I urge you to vote yes and to support the incredible work the task force has done. And I also want to thank you, Alan, for all the years that you made it so easy for me as town clerk. I loved working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen, and I loved working with you, too. It was always a pleasure. We've had several people in a row who have spoken in favor of the amendment. I want to try and balance this discussion out, so if there's anybody else who would like to speak against, please raise your hand. Yes, yes, sir, with the yellow card.
Matt Gibbs, 9 Lincoln Avenue. I guess maybe this is a question for the Finance Committee. Do we have an estimate of the projected grants we'll be applying for over the next one in three years?
Ms. Melish. Yes, Ms. Bodnar Turner. This is Sandy Bodnar Turner, who is a member of the MBTA Task Force.
I looked at the number of grants in fiscal year 2024, which is the year just completed, fiscal year 2025, and what was planned for fiscal year 2026. There are two broad categories of grants. One are the grants for which we would automatically be ineligible, where money is gone, and those are because those grant programs are in the law itself, in the 3A law itself, and there are grant programs for which we've inquired and received written communication from the granting agency that we would be ineligible if, in fact, we did not comply with the law. In those three fiscal years, the total of completely ineligible, you won't get it, you've thrown it away, is $6.8 million. That averages about $2.3 million a year, and that includes projects like the harbor dredging, the rotunda raising, and the library. The rest of the grants in that period add up to about slightly less than $3.2 million for the three years. And whether those are at risk or not, my judgment and what I'd like to convey to you is I think that they are very much at risk. In the letter that we received from the Seacoast Economic Council, which was one of the letters that said, "No, you're not, that's the rotunda project," the woman, Ellen Cibila, who's the director of the Seaport Economic Council, said, "Grant programs generally require that grantees certify compliance with state laws." Now, the Library Board of Trustees also wrote to the granting agency, I think it's the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, asking about, because there's some big plans there to renovate and expand the library, they got a similar response, "Nope, you wouldn't be eligible, and that decision will be made in January or February of 2025," and they said a similar thing. So I think we've put quite a lot of money at risk if we don't. There's also another number, I would like to respond to a comment that was made earlier about the number of communities that have delayed. Missing from that conversation is the number of communities that have already adopted potentially compliant zoning, and that number is 87 communities.
So just a quick follow-up question?
Yes.
So the, we have reserve funds, and from past town meetings, there's been some debate about whether or not we're above the stated percentage of reserve funds. I hope this isn't too complicated a question, but can somebody comment on how much money we have above the stated directive for reserve funds, and whether or not that would cover, let's say, a $3 million, you know, gap in grants for year one while we wait? So if we have $3 million in excess of our stated reserve goal, then we have $3 million available to self-fund some of these projects while we wait for other court rules?
And I'll ask Ms. Melish, who's the chair of the Finance Committee, to respond to that question.
So when we worked on the fiscal year '25 budget, we reduced our desired reserve level from 10% to 8%, and we have used that in conjunction with the fiscal year '25 budget. I think that we're looking at $250 million in infrastructure needs. We're looking at a lot of increase, and the grants will help us offset some of that cost. Our reserves are minuscule in comparison.
So I'm sorry, just to clarify, so you're saying--
Do you have a follow-up question?
No, we do, I just want to clarify--
You need to wait to be recognized.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So just to clarify, my apologies. I think what you said is we do not have reserve funds-- I think what you said is we do not have reserve funds above and beyond the 8% available for FY '25.
For, yeah, for what we budgeted for '25. We may have had some come into the reserve at the end of the year, but it's a minor amount because our expenses came in pretty much based on budget. So we'll be, we'll be working on the fiscal, well, it's a fiscal, I'm sorry, it's a fiscal year '26 budget where we used, is it '26? Yeah, it's a fiscal year '26 budget that we used the money up. We're like many years ahead.[642.66][642.66](LAUGHTER).
So I think the answer is there's no excess money available.
Right.
Thank you.
And I'll recognize Tom Keogh. He's had his hand up for a long time. And I've said he could have a little more than two minutes, just a little bit.
Seven is a little more than two.[666.43][666.43](LAUGHTER).
You're better at math than that, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I stand before you this evening to state the obvious. The MBTA zoning law, an article, is not a state suggestion. It is a state law. Section 3A of the Mass General Law is Chapter 48, the Zoning Act. Cities and towns do not have the ability to vote not to pay attention to those laws or not to live by those laws, and Manchester has until December 31st of this year to submit a zoning plan to meet the requirements of that law. I believe you should ask yourself, who do you want to have to work on and develop a plan for your town? Do you want it to be someone in the Attorney General's office? Someone in the bureaucratic office in Boston? No. I think it would be best to have a group of residents who know the town and are willing to present and discuss a plan with residents at public meetings, forums, and informational sessions. We have that group, the MBTA Zoning Task Force. The task force has developed a plan to keep local control over zoning issues. This plan is designed to do the following: minimize the impact of the plan on the community and have the least possible change to the town; have overlay zones that are designed to protect the town character and building guidelines. The four community housing overlay districts are within walking districts, walking distance, excuse me, of public transportation. The one exception to that is the Beaver Dam Road Zone. And these zones have been selected because they meet the requirements of the Act and are least susceptible to future development. If you've heard previously, this plan does not require any new units to be built. The initial plan, developed by the MBTA Task Force, has been submitted to the state and returned with minimal possible changes. The changes that have been made are in the plan before you tonight. The passing of this zoning act, the MBTA Communities Law, will make better use of our town funds. Our legal budget will not be overextended to defend our position versus the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Our capital budget will not be increased to over-planned amounts to make up for loss of grant opportunities from Mass Works, the library funding, and the Seaport District and other granting authorities. In closing, I wish to thank the members of the MBTA Task Force for their hundreds of hours of volunteer work and communicating their thoughts and plans with the residents. They are examples of what is right about governance. Remember, this is not a state suggestion. It is a state law, and the town must comply with it. Thank you.[851.43][851.43](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Keogh. Mr. Bothwick, is anyone waiting in the auditorium?
Any questions or comments? Yes, we have one.[865.00][865.00](LAUGHTER).
No?
Yes, we do. One minute now. Mike, please. It's on now.
Frederick Gibson, 11 Tanglewood Road. With that wonderful speech, I would like to recall old friend Adele Irvin and move the question.[896.04][896.04](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Gibson, Mr. Gibson, I am not sure how many people are waiting to speak in the auditorium, but I see several people in the gym, so I'm going to ask you to defer that for now, please. And I saw lots of hands up in the back here. Yes, sir.
Hi there. Hello? Okay. Christopher Gates, 19 Desmond Avenue, Apartment B. These zoning changes may be good for us. I just, you know, watching the whole process unfold, it seems very new to me that there would be what I might describe as governance through extortion, you know? Like I said, these might be good zoning policies.[946.75][946.75](APPLAUSE). And the grants always have conditions to be met, but this is like very strange in that this created sweeping changes across a variety of grants. And I just think it's strange. Maybe it's been done before, but it seems like we will be adopting governance through extortion as a norm, and so what else is this going to bring for us in the future?[975.82][975.82](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Sandy Rogers, 82 Old Essex Road. I just think it's important that everyone has facts, and I have a couple things to say. One is that we were told that 20% of what is proposed in zoning would be affordable. That is not necessarily the case, and I would like that clarified. What has been presented in our meetings is that it would be every fifth unit that would have to be potentially 20% below market rate. Therefore, every fifth unit or every 10th unit, which means that there are a lot of units because of the size of the zoning that had the lots, that we would never get a chance to mandate them be affordable. Second, what I want to say is I have been reviewing the compliance letters. Those towns that have complied, they all have similar wording. Developments in the district are subject to site plan review. Standards set forth in site plan review lean towards discretionary criteria. We caution town against applying site plan review criteria in a discretionary manner, which means that the state may not support any developer that negates what we would impose through site plan. And also, the guidelines regarding design are guidelines. They're not necessarily enforceable. I would like to hear how enforceable they are. Also, all of the towns, uh-oh, all of the towns have similar wording, which says, EOHLC may rescind a determination of district compliance or require changes to the district to remain in compliance as per Section 10 of the guidelines, or if it becomes aware of additional information not identified in this compliance review. My understanding is that once we give up our zoning rights here, that the state can just come in and mandate more changes. And it may not be just changes to grants. It could be changes to how dense it is or anything like that. Any permitting conducted in connection with additional factors listed above must not effectively reduce the estimated multifamily unit capacity of the district. So there is going to be extreme reviews. Another of the--
Excuse me, Ms. Rogers. You're over two minutes by quite a lot, and you've asked a number of questions. Let's just take a break and see if we can get those answered.
Right.
First question was about affordability, and I'll recognize Chris Olney.
So Section 3A does not require any affordability. It's a housing program, not an affordable housing program. However, the law says that communities may require that 10% of the units be affordable and able to be listed on the SHI. Or if we can demonstrate an economic feasibility, that could be pushed up to 20%. So the town undertook a feasibility study, which determined that a 20% affordability requirement would be feasible. And as a result, the task force and the planning board have included in the language that 20% of all units be affordable, and by affordable, that means that the income of a household living in a unit cannot exceed 80% of area median income, which is a bunch of gobbledygook, but basically it means something like 20% lower rents than everyone else is paying.
So--
Excuse me, Ms. Rogers. You do have another question?
Well, it's a follow-up to that particular one.
Go ahead.
Is that, so if a multifamily develops four units, we cannot state that 20%. It has to be five units or above.
That is correct. You cannot require 20% of four units. That would be .8 units, which is not something you could do. So yes, you're right.
Right, so a lot of the zoning lots right now, and also there's like a limit of three units per dwelling, per building, that we will be falling behind on our affordability unless the giant ones are built.
Well, so that's a balancing act for us. We thought it was more important to have small-scale development rather than 20 or 40-unit developments, which would have more affordable housing. We can't require more than 20%. That's the state limit. We're going as far as we can, and that means that a five-unit building is going to have one of its units affordable. That's better than none.
So Ms. Rogers, now we're going to move on to what I think was your second question. If I have it correctly, you were suggesting that, or raising the question of whether the state could impose additional requirements if we adopt this zoning amendment.
Right, and that's what they're already stating to those that are--
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Wait. I will allow Town Council to respond to that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Carolyn Murray, Town Council. With respect to the language compliance letters that are coming out from the Attorney General's office, they are including some standard language, as was described by the prior speaker. What it essentially means is just because, and in this instance here, you got preapproval of your bylaw from EOHLC. If you pass it tonight, it still has to go into the Attorney General's office for review and approval, and it still has to go into the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities for them to certify that you are in compliance. So I'll give you an example of one community that adopted MBTA zoning, got it approved at town meeting in the Attorney General's office. Then the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities came back and said they felt that there was a provision that because some of their MBTA zoning districts were in a particular water resource protection district, and uses in that water resource protection district were subject to a special permit, the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities asked the town to go back and amend their zoning to make it clear that those special permit requirements were not going to apply to the MBTA zoning. Because remember, this is supposed to be multifamily housing that is allowed as of right. So that's one example. The state is not going to, you know, they can just request that we amend our zoning if they feel it is not in compliance with the statute.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. Further discussion? Yes, sir, with the yellow card up.
John Carlson, 9 Walker Road. I believe many of our residents of this town received this flyer. It is full of fear-mongering, and even though it says, "A yes vote means..." dot, 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 that is not a fact. In fact, it says, point number one, a yes vote means our population will increase 20%. That is not a fact, because many of the property is already developed and cannot be developed as we're promoting fear with this flyer. On November 5th, over 20, close to 2,500 residents of this town voted against fear, voted against conspiracy theories, voted for the right thing. And I would encourage all those residents to also vote for the right thing and vote yes tonight. Thank you.[1546.32][1546.32](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Ms. Creighton, I'll recognize Sarah Creighton, Chair of the Planning Board.
Good evening, Sarah Creighton, 37 Proctor Street, and Chair of the Planning Board. I just want to circle back to the question about the special permit with the water protection. Town Council may not realize that we have put the criteria for watershed protection in our site plan review portion of this bylaw. So fear not, we're not giving up our rights on that. Secondly, the question was asked about site plan review, and Council has advised us that the Planning Board's site plan review can impose conditions, and those can include conditions that meet the criteria for earth removal, flood control, and water resource protection that are generally handed by special permit. So there are two types of permits, site plan review and special permit, and this one has to have site plan review. And the ability of the board to impose conditions is essentially the same. It's just a different process. And an applicant, Council has advised us that an applicant cannot ignore conditions imposed by the Planning Board in granting site plan review. It's also really important to understand that multifamily units are not exempt from the protections of existing environmental controls or the stormwater regulations that we just discussed in Article 2. I'd also like to just circle back to the concern about the fear and a few of the facts that have been floated around here that are incorrect. And Mr. Carlson mentioned the postcard. I just want to give you a couple that, to correct, and that is that, as we've said, this is a zoning proposal, not a development plan. We have many properties in town that have the ability to develop into a two-family, that have remained single-family for decades. And the districts, as we've said, have been carefully crafted to minimize, not maximize, development. An independent consultant said that only 34 units outside of Beaver Dam were economically viable, and I just learned tonight that a storage area gets a 15% return on investment, and housing is something like 4% or 5%. The second thing is that the Milton case really is not relevant to us. The third thing is that 3A law was only amended once, and that was to change the name of the agency in charge and add an additional grant that could be withheld. I also just want to assure you that the cell signaling project before the Planning Board right now will not result in any additional traffic lights. The Department of Transportation has actually asked for a traffic study for Phase 2, if that phase is ever built. So zero traffic lights right now, appearing planned, and I'm not aware that anybody's planning any. Lastly, the statute gives the town the tools to deny a project if water and sewer are not sufficient at the time of permitting. And as we've said, multifamily uses, regardless of where they are or how many units are proposed, will undergo a design review, a site plan review, and affordability requirements if they're over five, all safeguards that do not exist for currently allowed new housing units. I just want to say also, thank you all for coming tonight to learn the facts about this. It seems to me that this is the ultimate demonstration of the democratic process, and I urge you to vote yes.[1780.13][1780.13](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Ms. Creighton. Mr. Bothwick, do we have anybody looking to speak in the auditorium?
Yes, we do.
Would you recognize that person, please?
Yes, Mr. Gilbert.
Yes, Mr. Gilbert.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Gary Gilbert, 11 Magnolia Ave. Somebody mentioned earlier that we should take a more deliberate approach. It's been approaching a year and a half that a very competent team of people have been working on developing this law. It's very nuanced, and I don't believe they've been rushing at all. If someone wanted to develop some laws to encourage more housing in town, it would look very different than this. And they rather cleverly set it up so very little, very few lots are likely to be developed. If we want to see lots developed more aggressively, we would do a whole different approach. Someone mentioned unresolved issues. Well, you know, they talk about making sausages in laws and such. You can modify laws after they're passed. It's easy enough to do. We should be regularly modifying our laws, in my opinion, tweaking them and making them better. And we would have the right to do it, once this is passed. Someone mentioned forever changing our town. Well, myself and a couple of other architects were involved in this process earlier on and developed a design, set of design guidelines that are now incorporated in the law. For the first time ever, the town will have a design review committee based on design guidelines that have already been reviewed and approved by the state. And that's a tool that we can use in the future for all sorts of things. It'll be the first time ever. And then, there are some people that are referring, they don't like the state telling us what to do. They already tell us what to do, in a lot of ways. The Board of Health Regulations, Title 5, they tell us what to do on many, many aspects of our zoning and planning and land use laws. But, you know, the bottom, one bottom line to this is, I don't want to pay that much more in taxes. I think with sea level rise, we're going to be confronted with a lot more need for grants, more than this 7% to 14% tax increase they're talking about. I don't want to pay $1,800 more a year in taxes just because I said no to the state. I think this is a well-crafted law, and we should all support it.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, Alan.
I'm going to recognize Mary Foley. I see her hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, fellow residents. I stand before you tonight to express my concerns regarding the MBTA zoning proposal that we are being asked to vote on tonight. I have been an active Planning Board member since 2018. If you know me, you know I'm all about the details and data. I will not bore you tonight with the numbers, but I have looked at the state MBTA zoning for over a year now, and it is the data that shows the negative impact to Manchester. The increase in the number of cars and traffic and on-street parking, the increase in water usage and sewer usage, the increased population numbers and housing units, increases to our schools and local hospitals and highways. Our small coastal community of Manchester will have trouble absorbing all of this. The state is saying they will withhold our own tax dollars if we do not agree with this zoning overreach. Is there any guarantee of grant monies with the yes vote? No. Is there money coming from the state to support the impacts of this zoning? No. It is said this will create housing at different price points. Where and how? A developer will build to make the most money. It is said this preserves open space. How? More building means less open space. We must consider the impact of these zoning changes. Prior generations worked hard to protect this community for us. They understood that decisions made today will echo into the future, impacting not just us, but generations to come. A court case is currently pending on this issue. It would be prudent to wait for the court's decision before making any zoning changes. Making changes without clarity on what we are ultimately voting on can lead to unforeseen consequences that could negatively impact our town. Will the guidelines be declared not enforceable? Will the guidelines keep changing? We don't know. Let's stand in preserving our community. Thank you, and a no vote is a vote to postpone. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Foley. Someone's coming with you.
You want to come, too? She is not a prop. Hi, good evening. My name is Dr. Eden Davies. I'm at 23 Blyndman Circle. And I had the privilege of growing up in Manchester, and I chose to return here to raise my family. So, this community is incredibly important to me. I help plan town events with the Manchester Mothers Club. I volunteer at the school. And I also served as a library trustee. And I want my girls to grow up having the same quintessential small-town experience that I had. But I also realize that change is inevitable. So, with that in mind, I'm here to encourage a yes vote on the MBTA zoning issue. We can really only kick the can down the road so long, as you have heard. Frankly, we have to be in compliance with the state laws. Voting no would be a violation of the state laws, it would open us up to lawsuits, sorry, we would have significant fines and legal fees, and a loss of control in the design process. But the most harmful risk to our town would be losing millions of dollars in grant money that we need to upgrade our historic buildings. Especially with the loss of the community center, it's more important than ever to invest, especially in the public library. That's my heart there. The library needs upgrades, it needs modernization, increased space, and it's going to not just be grant money. We will need local money for this as well. But without the grant money, none of this is really possible. So, I mean, I want to see things, and I want our community to grow. I want to see conference rooms and workspace and children's programming and safer book storage. I want to see shelters for national disasters and power outages. Voting no would simply just be throwing money out the door. So, I understand that change is not easy, but voting no is short-sighted, it's risky, it's costly, and it's really not in the best interest of our town. So, please vote yes for our children, our community, and our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davies.
Alan, we have a question in the auditorium.
Mr. Bothwick, is there anyone looking to speak in the auditorium?
Yes, there is.
Would you recognize that person, please?
Please come to the mic.
Hi, Ken Warnock, 5 Running Ridge Row. I'd like to move the question to a vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warnock. And is that seconded? It's seconded.
Seconded.
That's a 2/3s vote. If you're in favor of cutting off debate, yes. We need a slide. Just a moment while we get a slide.
This is a motion to move the question to cut off debate. It's 2/3s vote?
That's correct. We're just putting up a slide.
Not yet.
Tiffany has one ready, so it won't take for long. So, press 1 for yes, 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. As I said, this is a 2/3s vote, and voting is open. And the motion prevails by more than 2/3, 778 to 83 with six abstentions. So, now we'll vote on the main motion as amended by Ms. Melish and the voters. As I said when we took up Article 4, this is a simple majority vote. And press yes for, 1 for yes, 2 for no, and 3 to abstain, and voting is open.
Hold on. Give it a second. Alan, we're having some trouble with the votes. It doesn't look like it's ready to string right now. Hold on.
Well, what's displaying here is 506 yes, 160 no, and 7 abstain. But, what is the problem you're having in the auditorium?
The keypad just doesn't give you a, it gives you a zero in the box. It doesn't give you the green light, the red light is-
All of the keypad?
Yeah. Apparently. Can we, can we try to recycle the vote and try it again one more time?
Let's try it again, because it's been working all evening. It's been tested more times than I can count.
Or has it?
Ms. Hill, we've cut off debate. What is it, then? Well, I'm not going to allow a motion to adjourn, and I'll tell you why. If we adjourn, instead of dissolving the meeting, the meeting has not come to an end. And all of the actions we've taken on the three other articles would be ineffective. We wouldn't be able to buy the conservation restriction, we wouldn't be able to adopt stormwater regulations, and we wouldn't be able to pay prior bills from the previous year. So, that's not allowed. Pardon me? No. We're in the, we're cut off debate, and we're in the process of voting.
The voting open?
Hold on one second.
We can't dissolve the meeting under our bylaw until we've acted on all the articles. So, we're going to, what we're going to do is to vote again. Okay. Voting is open, 1 for yes, 2 for no, and 3 to abstain.
Alan, it still doesn't seem to be working here in the auditorium, so we can, we could-
All right. Well, in that case, we will have to do it the old-fashioned way. So, get your ready, get your yellow cards ready.
Everyone have your yellow cards?
What? So, we're going to, we're going to wait while we, while the clerk gets counters so the tellers can count the cards. I don't see any other way to do this, because the clickers apparently aren't working. We're just going to wait for a moment. Here, I've got it. Wait, wait, are you raising a point of order? Because that's all that's permissible now.
We have a problem here.
Hold on one second, Alan, please.
All right. Go to a microphone and state your point of order, please, and give us your name and
Kevin Leach, 33 Summer Street. The Secretary of the Commonwealth has issued a voter's bill of rights, and one of the rights is that you get to have autonomy or privacy in your voting. Voting as we do with these cards affords no privacy to those who are voting, and I don't think we should be using that system.
I'm going to ask Town Council to respond to that. This is Michelle Randazzo with KP Law.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone, because you need two lawyers on a topic such as this. The information that was just cited by the previous speaker does not apply to town meeting. In fact, there's a general presumption that votes will be held in the open in the absence of very limited circumstances.
Thank you, Ms. Randazzo. Now, let me, let me just ask, any, what you should be seeing when you press the clicker is the number that corresponds to your vote. 1A for yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Alan, I think we had a, maybe someone hit the receiver and disconnected it, so let's try the electronic voting one more time, okay?
Music to my ears.
I think, I think we're, I think we're fixed, Alan, so let's do it one more time.
I, you know, there are times when I think Murphy is at our meeting. Yeah, I heard. I think it's fixed. Mr. Bothwick, is the receiver fixed now?
You know, do you want me to promise that? I'm not sure. I'm ready to promise, but I think I have good information that we should be ready to go, Mr. Wilson.
You're damn right I want you to promise.
But let's give it a go.
All right. We are ready.
Fix the internet.
Voting is open. No, it's not.
Yay!
All right, let's stop. We're going to, we're going to stop and do this again, till we get it right. No, we're not going to, we're going to ignore that one? Clear it?
You think so? But it didn't show up in here?
Just don't worry about it.
Mr. Wilson, we had votes recorded here, 121 in favor.
Well-
121 votes recorded here. Did those show up over in the-
We're going to, we're going to vote again, so it should aggregate the vote on the screen.
Hold on, hold on one s- We have to reboot something here, so.
Are you ready? Are you ready, Mr. Bothwick?
Mr. Starkey is doing a little magic here, so please bear with us one more minute.
I should just thank Mr. Starkey, because he has done incredible work to get this thing to work properly and-
Yay!
Hours, many, many hours.
Mr. Starkey says, "We're ready to go."
If he says it, I believe it. All right. Ready to vote? If you're in favor, press 1.
Yay!
2 for no, and 3 to abstain. Voting is- 636 in favor, 214 opposed, and 7 abstained.
Thank you, Mr. Starkey.
The motion prevails by a majority, and Ann Harrison moves to dissolve the special town meeting, and John Round seconds the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. I declare the special town meeting dissolved.
Thank you all.